No, no, no. I'm sensitive because of that one time that I. Thank you. You ready? All right, we're gonna commence. Good evening. Welcome to the Special Committee of the Whole for Monday, June 12, 2023. Clerk McCura, please call the roll.
We have Mayor Keith Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor McCabe, Counselor Norris, Counselor Sheffield, Counselor Piazza, and City Clerk McCura.
Okay. New business, Public Works. Bill, if you could come up to the desk and you'll need to probably need to turn that mic on. So we're gonna talk about vehicle purchases first. First one is a 2023 Ford F-550 with dump body. You can walk us through that.
Okay. Good evening all. This particular truck supports the fiscal year ending 2024 budget, so that's this year. The purchase that I'm requesting approval for is from Jangris Ford. It's an F-550. The cost for the vehicle is for the truck and dump, $76,257.30. And for the plow and sander setup, $15,812.80. And the total vehicle cost is $92,070.10. Now, this particular vehicle is available now, hence the reaching out a little bit sooner. I can't make the purchase until July 1, when the funding becomes available, but Jangris has promised to hold us, hold the truck for us, so that's this particular truck, okay? It's replacing number 16. It's a 2005. Also looking at possibly trading that in. I just don't have the value. More than likely, it's $10,000 for trade-in. So that'll be reduced from the price as well, okay? It's in the budget. Questions on that one, or would you like me to go to the next?
No, hold on. Any questions from the council on the Ford F-550? Counselor Norris.
So you are actually looking at trading in the 2005 in opposed to holding it?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Carter, or correction, Counselor Sheffield?
Uh, Bill, how are you?
Very good, sir.
What's the mileage on this vehicle?
This particular truck is 75,000 miles on it. 2005, model year.
So, um, so this, this Ford is a 2023?
This particular vehicle, yes, will be a, the new vehicle will be a 2023.
Oh, so it's, so this is, so with 75,000 miles on it? Okay.
Uh, the one that we're, the one we're replacing has 75,000. This is a brand-new vehicle.
Oh, brand, okay.
Yeah, approved for this year's budget. I'm just coming a couple of weeks early because we've actually got an opportunity to get one. So they promised to hold us, the truck for us, but they're, they're very difficult to get right now. And you'll find that on the next vehicle that I talk about.
Okay.
Okay?
Any other questions? Counselor Piazza?
Thank you. I was gonna ask, where is it? So when you trade in the other vehicle, the 2005, well, does that one also include the, where are we here? The hopper sander? Does that one also in plow?
This particular vehicle, yes. So it's pretty much like-for-like.
Okay.
Yep.
So it'll be $10,000 for the whole package?
Absolutely.
Possibly for the trade-in? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, in that case, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 6:19, 2023.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, Bill, move on to 2021.
So we're on to the next vehicle. So this particular vehicle was on the fiscal year ending 2022 budget. We've been waiting two years to get a truck. This is one of the larger trucks. It's one of five plow, large pile trucks that we utilize, right? This, there was an original resolution that was approved back in 2021 for the purchase. Again, because we waited so long, things have changed. We're having difficulties with HP Fairfield to finish up with the body hitch and plow. So the reason for the new resolution is to support the truck, but to switch over, it's from HP Fairfield to Viking Sives for the body hitch and plow. Again, waiting two years on this. This replaces a 2004 vehicle. It's got 74,000 original miles on it. We're going to actually take the sander that's on the original truck, move that over to the new truck on our own. That saves us about $25,000. It's a stainless steel setup. The cost of the new truck is going to be $91,250 for the cabin chassis. Another 73,949 for the body hitch and plow. The total for that is $165,199. We're going to trade in the old vehicle. Again, it's a large truck. We're gonna get $28,000 for the trade-in on that. And brings us down to a total cost for the city, $137,199. Made out pretty well with the trade-in.
Questions on that vehicle? Counselor Carter?
Good, how are you, sir?
Just a question. I intend to pass it.
Yeah, yeah.
When you, when you, uh, when you replace items, as such, the, um, you're putting what?
We're actually taking the sander.
The sander, yeah. So when you do that by yourself, does it like affect any warranties or anything in the future, like?
Not for the truck or anything. So there won't be any warranty on the sander box.
No, 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 as far as the truck goes. Like say the truck, something happens to the truck, they won't say something like?
Nope, absolutely not. Because it's just really a bolt into the bed on the back. There's nothing to do with the drive-through.
$25,000, they charge for, they charge for that?
Yeah, so that's what, we'd estimate a $25,000 savings by doing that, so.
Wrong business.
Yeah, yeah.
Counselor Sheffield?
Yeah, I was looking at the shipping fees that went up $5,000. Was there a reason why?
That was just, and that kind of, that's the reason why we looked at getting away from HP Fairfield and going with Viking Sives. And that's kind of why we looked into that. It was, we, they've been holding us up, holding us up. There was, again, that's part of the complications with them, and we went with Viking Sives, and hence the new resolution. So it worked out well. We're still well under the budget. The, the value that we had budgeted for it. Okay?
Price of doing business.
Any other questions or comments? I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 6:19, 2023.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, concrete pavement and milling?
Sure. So this is for the fiscal year ending 2024 budget, so I won't have, the funding for this won't become available until July 1, right? This was approved for this year's budget. I'm trying to get out a little bit ahead by coming to council requesting approval. Going to be using Charles Pastriak. He does all of our paving. And this is for paving of, milling paving for Beach Pond Road and South Prospect. The intent is really to get into his queue a little bit sooner. We got a lot of work going on this year, so I want to come, be able to come back to him July 1. When can I get you in here and get it done? Okay.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. Is this not work that the union would usually do?
Absolutely not. So this is the paving. We utilize Pastriak every year. We do some asphalt work, but it truly is to, when we do the sidewalks, the asphalt strips, you know, so we're really just blending back into the road, but we don't do any milling and paving. We don't have that.
And then this, so this project, when do you estimate it's gonna start?
So funding becomes available July 1. I don't have a, a start date from Charlie, but I want to reach out to him and try to get him in the queue sooner than later. So I'm hoping the end of July, 1st of August, or something like that.
In, how long is this going to take them to do? Just because this is the busiest time for that road.
It's a busy time of the road. So, right, so doing Beach Pond will take him two days, four days to finish that up. And then, and that's right in front of the beach a little bit, so we'll have to detour traffic around to come down Tyler or Central probably, depending.
So we are gonna block the whole road when we?
When we go to, well, so more than likely, what we will do is, he'll do half. So he'll mill one side, and then he'll mill the other side. That'll be the couple, first days. And then he'll come back and pave one side and pave the other. So it'll be a deterrent for traffic. It'll be open, but for convenience, and we'll have traffic, uh, flaggers out there, but for convenience, it'd be easier to go around Tyler or Central, you know, to get.
But it won't be completely blocked off?
No, we won't block it off.
And something else we'll do is we'll use Facebook to get the information out, let people know alternate routes.
Yeah, that works really well for us.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Norris?
So there really is no better time?
No. And it won't be on the weekend, so we won't impact the weekend beach going, but it'll be during the week.
All right. So I, I do know that the state contract. Do we look at other companies that do this kind of work that's on state contract, or do we figure out, these guys do good work, we've worked them, with them before, so let's just keep moving?
Yep, so, um, so we're working with Director Yuhas on it. And Pastriak is, is the, the company we've been using. He is, I believe, on a state contract bid as well, so it, it works out really well for him. He does very well. Matter of fact, he's difficult to get. He does a lot of the other towns and cities. And that's the reason why I really want to reach out to him to see if I can get him as sooner, because last year we had, you know, the last, end of the year to do Brandy G and everything else that was going on, so.
So is this outfit the only ones in essentially Southeastern Connecticut that do?
No, there are others. There were others that do it. Pastriak, I feel, is, is the best for the city, best selection for the city. And Ron also would agree with that.
Okay, so did we, did we compare pricing?
No, no.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor, council meeting of 6:19, 2023.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention? Aye for which?
I oppose.
You oppose, okay? So we have one opposed.
Can I say, comment? I'm already voting, though.
No, we've, we've finished voting.
I understand. Just comment, is our question.
But we're done talking about this. So we've already voted. This line item is done. We're moving to the next line item.
So there's nothing in the rules where I could just ask a question on record?
We're done. But, but as a city, but as, at the mayor and council meeting, you can ask.
I don't need to ask it then. I was gonna, don't waste this time. I don't want to ask it right here. It's, it's fine.
Okay. All right, Bill, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Chief? So we're gonna talk about cameras next? All right, so Chief, first things, camera purchase. You can walk us through that.
Okay, this is our second set of cameras. They are, we're getting them through the Nuclear Safety Emergency Planning Grant Fund. So these sets of cameras will be down at Thomas Road, which is our, one of our evacuation routes, and CBS and Rainville locations. So they will tie in with the two that we're putting down here, and the one on Bridge Street as well. Using, utilizing the same company that are putting in the cameras shortly. These are their second batch that we're getting through a grant system, which will be tied into our dispatch center, so if there's any kind of backup during a hurricane or a nuclear event or something like that, we'll be able to look at it, see it, and reroute traffic as quickly as possible. This will be coming out of this year, so we're trying to get ahead. We'll get the bud, get the funding as of July 1. So as soon as we get it, we can order the cameras, because I believe the first set, we're on back order for a few months, so we're trying to get them as fast as we can.
Hold on, I gotta correct something here. We're gonna need to go back and make new motions. I had the wrong date. Okay, questions on this? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. So the grant is paying for the cameras. Are having these additional cameras, including the ones that we already approved that are gonna be installed, is it costing us more to store that data, or are we storing that data? How does that work? Like, how long do we store the, the footage, and is that impacting our storage capacity or anything else that's going to be additional ongoing costs?
Good, good question. We will own the equipment. All the storage will be in-house, and we'll own the servers, and we will keep them, we'll put it on a rotating basis, just like some other equipment we have. So it'll, three months, six months, a year. We haven't determined how long we're gonna keep it. But at least we will be able to keep it for three months, and if there's a, if there's an incident that we need to get or look at, we can burn it right away, and we can save it on disk or a flash drive, so we can continually run over it.
So we'll have all the equipment. It's not like we're storing it in a, in the cloud that we need to pay more because we've got so much more data or anything like that?
Nope, we'll, all in-house, and it'll, it'll rewrite itself after, I don't, whatever we determine, correct, Captain?
Yes.
Three months, six months, we'll just rotate it, but we'll burn it as soon as we need it.
Perfect, thank you.
Counselor Norris?
But at the moment, do you know what your record length is? Is it 60 days?
I do not. Here.
I'm sorry. Because I-
Captain's done it all.
I actually was handling that. Right now, it's 30 days, okay? But that's, it can be adjusted based upon whatever our needs are. But with the storage capacity, we thought we'd start with the 30 days initially.
So how many cameras do you currently have on the system?
We just-
We don't have any right now. We're, we're putting four in, in two different locations.
All right.
And then we're gonna put another two in.
Okay, got it.
There's gonna be a total of two, four, six, three egress in and out of the city.
Okay. So this 25,006, 2440, is that cameras insulation?
It's everything.
It's everything?
Yep, spoke up, ready to go. We don't have to do anything.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions on this? Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. Is there a certain time from the grant to place the cameras in place, or there's no limit of time through the grant? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I'd like, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 6:20, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention? After the chief is, we do the radar signs, I will go back and do the admin correction on the other dates, because I said 19th, 19th is Monday, which is a holiday. We'll be having our meeting on the 20th. So Chief, radar, uh, radar speed signs?
Yes, sir. This is, uh, what we had put in our budget this year, this coming year, is for speed signs. These signs will be able to be moved around from location to location. We will have hard cases for them to store in when we move in, so there will be no damage. But they will have battery backup. They will have solar panels on them. They will have, they will be able to, they're Bluetooth, and they will store i, uh, information as far as the highest peak traffic, speeds of individuals, vehicles traveling back and forth. We will be able to look at that from in here and determine when's the best time to get officers out there to enforce speeding, or when's the peak time. And when somebody calls up and say, "I would like to sign over here," we can just pack one up and we can move it over. So if we can put it on in front of Beach Pond area, we can put it in front of EB on Eastern Point Road, where the speed limit's 15 miles an hour. We can put it about anywhere, so we'll probably do that for a three-month period, maybe longer in certain areas, especially with certain times, like in the summer, we'll put it down at the beach. After summer ends, we'll move it other places, other locations. But the bit, the ability to store the information, get the, obtain it, obtain the information of the speeds, the peak times, and stuff like that would be very helpful to us.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. So, as you know, I drive a lot, and I have seen what I think are probably the same signs that we're getting. And one of my major pet peeves is a lot of them say your speed, and it tells you your speed, but doesn't tell you what the speed limit is. So when we put them up, is it also going to say what the speed limit right there is? Because there's a lot of places, not, not in the city, because I don't know where you're gonna put them, but I have run into a lot of places where it'll tell you your speed, and it'll like flash, but there's no speed limit sign anywhere, so I don't know if I'm speeding or not. It's just telling me what speed I'm going, which is not helpful, because my car also tells me what speed I'm going. So is that something that, is it, does it also have that on there? Because a lot of them don't.
We, we did talk to the, um, the vendor at the CPCA conference, and we discussed that with them. And there are signs that have a spot for the speed limit sign to put in.
Okay.
So if it's flashing, you're speeding. But if it's not, then you're good. But we will have the sign there.
Okay. And then I just want to encourage, and I will, will do this in person, when I talk to people, I think this is such a great tool, because the only thing we had before was the speed trailer, which, one, is bulky and a pain to move around, two, doesn't give you all the information. And we're getting four of them, which I think, you know, four is gonna be so handy for, to move around the city. So I just want to encourage residents, if they have a problem with excessive speeding in front of their house, or somewhere that they notice, to please let us know, because now we will have this tool to use that will be more effective than guessing, which is kind of what we have to do, just taking educated guesses on where are the speeding, when's the speeding. So I, I personally am going to recommend people contact the non-emergency number and let you guys know if they're having issues in their neighborhood, because I do think these will really help, so, thank you.
Counsel, Sheffield?
Yeah, I saw the speed sign, the radar in New London over, going towards Eugene, well, the overpass going towards the police station, and I saw their new radar to where it shows, uh, you know, your speed, and then of course, the speed limit right there. Are, will ours be similar to that type of, uh, because I guess when there's no traffic, it just shows the police lights flickering, and then, then as you approach, it shows your speed.
Is that the big one out front by the PD?
Uh, not right by it, but on the highway overpass coming off of 95.
Right.
And, uh, basically, it's 32, coming, coming towards, uh.
Ours will be a smaller sign. I think it's like two feet by two feet.
Okay.
And it'll have the speed limit sign attached to it underneath, and it'll flash. I don't think it has the red and blues, like some of them do.
Yeah, that's the one, yeah, that's the one in London has that type of.
Some have the yellow that'll flash. Ours will just flash when it, when you're going over the speed limit.
Okay.
Counselor Piazza?
Thank you. So when they're set up, you get information on certain vehicles that are speeding, or just vehicles that are speeding?
There is an add-on, which we did not look, well, at this point, we didn't look into. It's, uh, with these signs, you can get them built, so you can have the license plate readers on them.
Mm-hmm.
But we didn't get that, to that part. But we got them, so we can in the future if we need to, if we would like to get the funding for that.
Okay, do you already have set up places that you're gonna place them when you first get them?
Yes.
Like specifically?
Yes, in front of the schools, Beach Pond Road, and, uh, sorry, not Beach Pond Road. In front, right near Plant Street along the golf course. Why am I thinking, Chantac Road? Am I throwing a blank here?
Eastern Point?
Bridge Street and Thames.
Bridge Street and Thames. We can put them anywhere, but there are four locations we're gonna look at right now. Thames Street is one of them.
Okay.
Eastern Point Road, probably in the beginning, for all the workers going across. But one other good thing, sorry, that you brought that up is good, is there are cameras on the signs themselves, because some, some youthful individuals sometimes like to collect them, and when they take them off, or if they get them off, and they put them in their garage, they can GPS it, and we can find out where it's at. And we can go in the garage or wherever it is hidden and get it, and then it'll have a picture of the person that actually took it. So I thought that was very interesting. You told us the last time we talked to the vendor.
That's a good one. I just, I would personally suggest, because we have, just for FYI, and maybe you already know, is that we have many, many more bus routes that are going out for the summer, a lot. So, um, I'm gonna say we already have out 20, and we're still expecting more to come in. So my issue is, I am down by Washington Park, and with the farmer's market coming, whatever, just last week, I was crossing a person. I always give them the thumbs up. She looked at me, was just crossing, and this guy just like, phew, you know, it's just very scary. And, um, that area, so I used to come, coming from Clarence B., now I come the other way. And either way, I have to cross. I have one, and then three that go this way. So, but it's just, that area to me is really scary as far as, um, speed is a cut, especially, I'm sorry?
Was that just a couple of days ago? Two days ago?
That was, let me see, today's Monday. I wanna say that was either Thursday or Friday of last week. Yeah. They're zippity-doo on, down, down there. And also, I mean, this doesn't have to pertain to the cameras, but I just did want to kind of throw it in. I noticed today, which I don't know why I've never noticed it before, coming up the hill to North Street, it does say, um, mind you have Bridge Street Extension there, or is that still Bridge Street? When you, oh, Broad Street, I'm sorry, Broad Street Extension. When you come up the hill, it says, "Do not block intersection." Coming the other way, it does not. And I've come from Bridge Street over trying to cross, and I, and, and I just look at the cars and give them the, are you serious? Are you serious? No, it's in the afternoon, when EB's coming out. And I can't cross. So I, but I noticed there was no sign, so I don't know if there was one, and it was taken out for some reason, or, you know, I don't know. But I was just.
All right. Let's keep it on the speed signs.
Sorry, thank you for your-
Counselor Norris?
These are great for feedback and helping people realize how fast they're going. I would request that we could keep them at the location for more than two days, if not longer. So at least people, because if it is designed to be feedback, then folks that are driving that actually get to see it more than two or three times. We all know that stats will show most of the people at speed live in that very same neighborhood or in that street, and we don't think so often. We just want to get in the driveway or garage. So again, that feedback will help a lot. You got a really good price, so thank you. But I'm curious, like, why do you feel you need a contingency dollar amount, the $3,892.32? Or unless I'm reading that wrong?
Well, the contingencies are usually for anything that would happen as far as prices go up or prices go down, I would assume.
I think that's what it is. It is, um, if there are any issues during, prior to the installation or during the installation, okay, it's just a contingency in the event something happens, okay?
Because what happened last time, I know that. What happened last time is we had the money for the cameras. Well, by the time we were able to get the cameras, those prices went up. So we had to go to a le, lesser, these ones that we just put in here, we had to go to a next model down that we could afford.
Any other questions or comments on this?
I just have a quick question. I wasn't gonna say anything, but, I mean, again, I'm gonna pass it anyway. Um, because I like it, it's, we need it. Um, I wasn't aware of the, um, the, uh, the option of the, the, the plate readers. Is that like a significant, um, like difference in place?
It's a bigger of a box unit that goes on the, on the, they have it in a trailer as well, but they have a bigger box that would go on the pole, that would be more of a permanent location.
And, and do we know, once you get the, the plate reader and indicating speed, right? By statute, are you allowed to issue, can you issue tickets based off of that, off of that?
That, I think, I'm not sure about that one, because I know they have to be tested every now and then, the radars.
Okay, because if that was the case, that, that, that would be like aesthetically, I, I, obviously, with my, based on my experience with law enforcement, and just knowing, particularly where I, I know people's speed, I also know one of the reasons why people may speed there, and that, um, it, it's, it's a, a difficult location to get, is because you can't really put cruisers, where there's no place to get off the side of the road. So it's pretty much a, you know, um, specifically, like you said, in that, that Bridge Street to Thames Street section, once around Thames Street, they're gone. There's no, really no way, you know? If, if that was feasible to get a box where you could actually issue that, that would actually be pretty good, and I, I would be willing to back some of that, of, to back that as far as us purchasing something like that, just because of the feasibility or non-feasibility of having law enforcement presence there, because there is no place to, to run laser, you know?
Correct, because we all know the signs are gonna be great, and they're gonna slow people down.
There's one place, there's one-
But you're gonna have to enforce it somewhere.
Like, once you go towards, once you go down Bridge Street, there's a place, we know that they sit at the, the Circle Motor or the one, that's the one location, but that's going down Bridge Street. That's the one location, but that's going down Bridge Street. Once they turn that corner, it's to the races, all the way to, all the way to, to, um, to EB. And that's where we have to actually get them. And at some point it came an opinion that we don't need speed bumps, which I think we do, but I think something needs to be done as far as that.
Understood.
Counselor Norris?
Is this the venue to potentially discuss the purchase of one or two plate readers?
We would like.
Now? Well, we can make a referral to public safety. We could do that at the next mayor and council meeting. But we're, right now, we're, we're, the recommendation is to purchase these four signs or four, uh, yeah, four signs. And then to evaluate them while we do additional research on plate readers. So these will be, these will be used and needed, and then we could do the others an add-on.
This is just a general question. The, the, obviously, this is good, anything, anything to tear speed. You know, I was just thinking as far as longevity wise because it's, you know, living down there for all those years and being on the law enforcement side, it's frustrating. There's some times where I just. I bug, you know?
One thing that we did discuss with the, with the LPRs, license plate readers, is do we want them stationary or do we want them on a cruiser? You can get them on a cruiser, you can drive around all different locations and it'll automatically read license plates. So four antennas, four cameras on a car and drive around. Or do we make them here where we sit them for six months or six months and then move them around? That was where we were at in the discussion with the captain.
Yeah, I was asking particularly about the, um, the speed, because I didn't know, and you, you don't, you don't, you don't know that, right? If you actually do that, that's.
I'd have to check this down.
All right, so let's keep this on this. Anything else, Counselor Piazza?
Well, just, uh, um, off of Counselor Norris's question. So you had said it would go to refer it to public safety. So I'm just wondering with that, you know, how long of a process that is? And that is if it goes through that and they approve it, is it something, plate readers can be automatically attached? Or are we looking into something again to hit the budget? I mean, it will be hitting the budget. I mean, oh no, we can't attach it to these, so we have to get something more upgraded. And then it's then, it's like pointless.
No, it's not pointless.
Well, he said he already, he said that these are already retro free.
Is that right?
It's a special.
That's what he already explained it.
Right. We were, we were advised that they could be upgraded.
Okay, mine was my error. I didn't hear that. Okay.
Any other, Counselor Norris?
So procedurally, please allow me, is we don't have a mayor and council meeting next week?
Yes, we do, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, right? Cause I was just gonna say, does that give the chief time to figure out how much the addition would cost and come with a new resolution next week?
But I, I don't plan on doing it. I plan on referring this, let them do their research, and then we can come back to the council to do that and not to, not to rush them next week. If you're, if, if.
Okay.
If the council says, we, and this is why I wanna refer it. If the council says we wanna do this and this is all we want, then we'll pull this motion and we'll send them away to go do something else. The original intent of this was to get these signs, these are really good signs. They're used in a lot of places. We have found out that there's additional capabilities that we can add on. But what we were originally gonna do was put these up first and then determine if we wanted to go with the add-on information. So.
So I think what have been the most appropriate then, if we know these add-ons, is bring that conversation to council, have that conversation and then come with the appropriate motion versus doing this step one, then hearing that there's something that could be added. I think some of us like that idea, but we're not gonna act on that. We're gonna wait another three weeks, four weeks, and it just seems piecemeal together. But I, I, I understand the process.
You want me to pull it? If, so I'm about to say if you wanna, wanna move it, if you wanna move it, vote for it. If you don't wanna move it, don't vote for it. Deputy Mayor Depot had her hand up, Earl, and then we'll get back to you guys. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Well, a few things, but I, as the chief said, we can add on to them. I don't, personally, I'm not in favor of delaying this because we don't need to delay this in order to potentially add the other thing. So it doesn't make sense to me to, to table this motion or set it aside or anything like that because we can approve this motion and then if the chief gets enough information, he can come with an motion to add the other thing whenever. It's gonna take the same amount of time whether we vote on this now or we wait. We'll just approve it later, which won't make any sense. So I, I don't see the logistical reason to wait and vote on the whole thing when this has already been, this quote's already been worked out because also I assume we'd need to get a brand-new quote from the vendor, which would, might take them some time. And who knows? I'm just not in favor of delaying when we've already worked out all of these details. We know that there's an option. So, and the chief now knows we're interested in it, so I don't, I don't see any reason to, to delay this particular motion.
Counselor Carter, you had your hand up?
Yeah, just, uh, 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 two, two questions. So, um, for starters, um, I, I think, and you can correct me from wrong, chief, um, we would actually have to, and I'm, I, I, I'm with if, if, if we had plate readers that can actually enforce speed. That's to be clear. That's different than just plate readers. Right? So there would have to be research for that. So we wouldn't get something if we couldn't enforce speed, right? So, um, that's the, the fir- the, the first thing. And then the second thing, question would be to you, is even if we could, say you gotta, say you got an answer. Say you got on the horn and called the guy or girl, um, and said, do you have, are these readers that can enforce speed, right? How quickly, right, could that be kind of turned over or would that be elongated time? So do we know the answer to that?
I do not, but I can find out.
So with that said, I'm for passing this and then re, re, um, reevaluating the addi- the add-on, um, afterwards, you know, that, that's my opinion.
Counselor Piazza?
Thank you. So the mission of placing these is specifically what? What's our main mission here?
Main mission is to alert the residents or the people visiting and the residents that are speeding, that they're going over the speed limit in an effort to slow them down, which will in the long term hopefully prevent accidents from happening. Obtain all the data of how many cars are traveling through, when is the highest, the peak time of speeding? Is it, you know, Eastern Point Road when the kids are going to college? Or are they, when they're leaving the school or they're going to the beach? When is the best time for the officers to go down there and enforce the traffic?
Okay. And so my next question to that would be, do we have any evidence-based information that shows the effectiveness of placing these signs? And to place the signs for the purpose and the mission that you're saying? And if so, that's why I'm looking at the plate readers to see that, if that would be on top of that. Like if we already have the evidence that, yes, we have people speeding, now we're gonna place the signs, it's kinda like a one, two, three, four step. But then, then, well, that's not working or we know this for this, we can place the, I mean, it's, it sounds like I think that they probably, that maybe that has been done where this is where we think they're speeding. We don't have the signs or when we had the big bulky ones that we kinda have an idea. I'm assuming that part of this is also from citizen complaints. Um, right? So that's why I'm looking at the plate reader kind of like, you know, if we already have evidence based via big bulky signs, citizen complaints, we're just, so we're gonna put these. Um, I've seen them down, uh, on Ocean Avenue London in different places. And they blink, but they, I'm not sure if they have plate readers or not. Um, but that's why I'm saying, I was wondering if we should do the plate readers right away.
All the ones that Gratin Town bought last year and the ones they just purchased this year, all the ones in East Line where I live, they don't have them. Uh, they're just a deterrent for speeding. And it allows you to have the four mobile ones that we would have to move from one location to another. So we can get the whole city, the one bulky one we leave for six months, but it doesn't give us the data that we want. It's just the speed sign. And then we'd move it to somewhere else.
Right. So best practice, or do we have data that shows the effectiveness of these signs?
I do not personally have it. I just from talking with, uh, the chiefs from the, the local towns next to us. They work tremendously. They work for, they work for either slowing them down for long periods of time. But you have to enforce it after. Otherwise the signs is gonna get there and everybody's gonna get used to them and they're not gonna be afraid of being stopped and ticketed. So you have to have enforcement after a certain period of time. So they don't think you're just throwing them up there for the heck of it. And there's always that chance that somebody's gonna say, well, see if my speed or my, my rate, my speedometer works correctly and go sixty. So you have to enforce it.
Thank you.
Counselor Norris?
There's lots of evidence that say this stuff really does work. And I agree with this. I would vote for this. I'm just simply pushing the envelope because sometimes I feel conversations should have come to us or included us or conversations on a staff level, no fault of the chief, should have been expanded or enhanced. And it just seems it, this conversation should have happened, I guess, last week, two weeks ago, wherever they happened.
Can, can I just say, I think we're getting confused. License plate readers read the plates. They don't do anything about the speed or anything, okay? And the speed signs are merely calculating the speed of the vehicle. So they're not, they're recording the data, but it wouldn't be able to.
Sure.
That's what, that's what I was asking. I was saying if it's a plate reader, this is a non-discussion, but if it enforced the speed, it, it helps, helps us out, you know?
I don't know if you can give tickets in the state of Connecticut from plate readers.
There are some local areas that are trying to get.
You can, if they're uninsured, unregistered, you know?
Deputy Mayor Depot?
I, I just wanted to point out, as the chief just said, that, um, we, this did come up and we talked about it at the budget meeting. And maybe that's where Counselor Norris's concerns could have been brought up because we discussed what they were for and where they were going to be and when we would be buying them. Um, so it, it did come up before, just to be clear. So we're on the same page. We have talked about this before.
Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting at six twenty, twenty-three, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
We have motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you, chief. Thank you, captain. Okay. So before we go any further, we have three motions for the two trucks and one for the paving that had a date of six nineteen. The intent was for the next mayor and council meeting, which just happens to be the twentieth. So I would like to administratively change those dates to the twentieth with consensus from the council. Okay? That's what we'll do. We'll change them to the twentieth instead of going through and redoing all the motions.
It is on the website for the twentieth though.
Yes. But when I did my, when, when I pulled my, when I'm doing my notes for me and I pulled up my thing, I just put the next Monday. So. All right, Gratin Utilities Water Rate Ordinance, that'll be fi- that will be the final. So it's an ordinance, it's got initial approval and final approval. Final approval will be next, next Monday. So that's automatic, or next Tuesday. It's, it's automatic at the next mayor and council meeting. So.
Question on that one?
It's, well, it's automatic. So that's why it got on here, but we decided we weren't gonna discuss it and go through it. But go ahead.
So I'm seeing that Eversource, potentially their electric rates are coming down as low as thirty percent over the summer. I don't know how they're doing that, but Gratin Utility rates are not being re-looked at.
No, it's not. We, well, this is water, that's electric.
Yeah.
I mean, if you wanna reach out, we can talk later. And if there's, if there's something I need to refer to the, uh, Gratin Utilities, I will. Now, Eversource is also being helped by the state legislature. So.
So that's good conversation. Thank you.
Okay. So just to let you know, this is gonna be on at the next mayor and council meeting. All right, Parks and Rec, new appointment of youth advisory board. Uh, there's a motion here for Chris and Minno. We have an opening. And, uh, so you have our information there. And any questions or comments on that? All right, I'll take a motion to move that motion to, uh, it's a resolution rather, to, uh, mayor and council meeting of six twenty, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
No motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Sierra? So we can go to economic development, climate resilience, planning services update, update.
Good evening. All right, so. For the resiliency plan, um, this is bringing back, um, the proposal to work with SLR for our climate resilience capacity building. So you guys did see a proposal a couple of months ago, um, for this. It has been revised based off of comments from this body, um, leadership and staff to incorporate, um, more in-person workshops. The first iteration had a few virtual, um, workshops proposed, but we feel like it would be better and we'll actually get more out of the experience if it was in-person as well. Um, there were an increase in their hours because they will be doing a public hearing to incorporate the community resiliency plan and this capacity building work into our plan of conservation and development. So there is a, I don't have the exact figure for the increase, but there is an increase from the two proposals. But I just wanted to bring this back to you guys so you can understand why.
Any questions or comments? Counselor McCabe?
Uh, the resolution here has twenty-five thousand nine hundred ninety-five. Is that?
That's the new number. That's the new nu- that's the new number, not in addition to, right?
Correct. Yes, then that's the new number.
So it's going from eighteen thousand four hundred eighty-five to twenty-five thousand nine hundred ninety-five.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct, right, Sierra?
I'm sorry, I missed, I missed Y. I'm sorry.
The Y is for, in the original proposal, we were looking to do some virtual, um, meetings. We have decided now to do all in-person. Um, that was based off of feedback that we got from multiple sources. And we also needed, um, additional hours for them for the public hearing and everything that is required to incorporate both the community resiliency plan, all of the work that will be done during the capacity building into our plan of conservation and development.
Any other questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Depot?
I know that you won't know this exactly, but how much would it cost us to hire a person? Or I guess maybe the mayor would know this better, to hire a person that could do this work, that has the experience to do this work? Yeah.
I don't know. Well, it's a full-time, it's gonna be a full-time person, so it's probably gonna be at least, well, let's see. The town has a resilience person, right?
Yep.
Do you know what her salary is?
I can try to see if I can.
That's okay. So I, I think she's around seventy-five plus benefits.
So I, the reason that I'm asking that is I know that some, um, residents sometimes don't understand why we hire consultants. Um, but for example, this is going to cost us, you know, under twenty-six thousand dollars. And to hire someone that would do all this work would cost us more than that because if that's their salary, seventy grand, then we got benefits and all of that. So, um, I just wanted to make the point that, um, I appreciate, like, looking at it from that perspective. If we hire a consultant, we are saving a lot of money because as a small municipal. If we hire a consultant, we are saving a lot of money because as a small municipality, we don't have the capacity to hire for every position that we need. Um, that would be helpful. So, um, I mostly just wanted to draw a contrast between those two because I think people don't quite understand how much it costs to, to do things in-house. Um, and I know we use contractors for a lot of different things in the city that if we were a bigger municipality, we would hire someone for.
And they're, sorry, uh, just to add on to that, there's also more than one person, right? I think there's a team of four.
Yes, there is a team of four that would.
So that also supports, so there's different skill sets that are being utilized here as well.
Thank you.
Councilor Sheffield?
Thank you. Uh, Ed Sierra, we've used Malone and McBroom before for consulting, correct?
Yes, so Malone and McBroom was bought by SLR Consulting, so they merged.
Okay, that's, but the name is familiar. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none? Take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of six twenty, twenty, twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. And then the appointment of, uh, Thelonie Va- Va- Smith to the EDC. So you have the resume, uh, for her. And we're just looking to add her on to the, uh, as a regular member of the Economic Development Commission. Councilor Sheffield?
Will we be introduced to, uh?
She was trying to make it on Zoom tonight, she couldn't make it, but, um, yes, at some point in time, she will be here before the board to do an official introduction.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of tw- of six twenty, twenty, twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries. And thank you, Sierra. And then, and then lastly, we have the Juneteenth Proclamation. We have our Juneteenth Ceremony on Saturday at eleven o'clock. And this is the proclamation from the Office of the Mayor of City of Grotton, Connecticut, Proclamation, Juneteenth Independence Day. Whereas Juneteenth is a cultural observance celebrated by African-Americans commemorating the end of slavery in the United States. And whereas the first Juneteenth was celebrated June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five in the state of Texas after Union soldiers arrived in Galveston with news that the Civil War had ended two and a half years earlier and then enslaved, that the enslaved were now freed. And whereas President Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation, effective January first, eighteen sixty-three, had little impact on the citizens of Texas because of the minimal number of Union soldiers to enforce, enforce the executive and absolute equality of rights and rights of property between former masters and slaves. And whereas the June nineteenth celebration later became known as Juneteenth, a time for reassuring each other for praying and for gathering remaining family members. Now therefore, I, Keith Hedrick, urge the citizens of the City of Grotton to join together in observing the historical significance of Juneteenth Independence Day in America. And when it's thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of, of the City of Grotton to be affixed the seventeenth day of June twenty twenty-three. Signed, Keith Hedrick, Mayor of City of Grotton. So that's what we'll be reading, uh, on Saturday. And the council is encouraged to attend, and I hope you can come out. Uh, we have lots of things scheduled for that morning. Here at the, probably out there on the, if we have good weather, it'll be on the steps. If, if not, then it'll be inside. Eleven o'clock on Saturday morning. Let me double check my calendar since I've already had a calendar faux pas here, but. That is correct, eleven o'clock on the seventeenth.
Is there any reason why we're not doing on the nineteenth?
Yeah, because the, I don't know if you were here, but, uh, the people that are running the event are available on the seventeenth, their recommendation was to do it.
Because they're going other places, obviously.
Correct.
I got you.
Weather looks good.
Okay, great. Yeah, New London, New London is doing like a two-week celebration of Juneteenth, which is pretty impressive. They had, uh, at the Hempstead House this weekend. I didn't get a chance to, to go there, but Juliette went and said it was great. Uh, turnout and, and wonderful events there, so, so that's that. Uh, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion to the second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries. We are adjourned, thank you. Thank you all for coming out.